Call please. Here. Here. Here.
Yeah.
And I think we have a special person coming here today, do you?
Why, yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe we have a special visitor from the North Pole who's arrived here at our meeting.
I heard, heard of the jingle earlier.
I hear a jingle?
I hear a jangle.
Oh. Excuse me.
We have.
Merry Christmas to you, Stan. Glad you could make it down this way.
Glad to be here today. Thank you for having me. And I want to say Merry Christmas to all the boys and girls at Hazel Park. Now, I've been making my list and checking it twice. I will find out who's been on here tonight. Me and, me and Mrs. Plowes and else have been very busy at the North Pole. We've been making all of the guests. I'd hope you all made your list. I've been waiting on a few. And have, can't wait to get to those toys. Ho, ho, ho.
Thank you, Stan, for coming all this week.
Thank you. Now, I need to get back to the North Pole and get right back to work. I gotta go check out all my slaves. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, I'd like to, uh, have approval of the agenda. I move approval of the agenda as a vote. Extension, discussion. Are you done? We have an agenda. Like to open up for civic announcements in public, any civic announcements in public?
No one would vote for civic announcements in public, civic announcements in the city council. Mr. Mayor, I would just like to remind the people of Hazel Park that Santa Claus will be joining us once again this Saturday. He will be parading around the city of Hazel Park. And he will end up, uh, at the Hazel Park Historical Museum just before noon. So check out our Facebook page to see a copy of the schedule and route so that you can stop by one of the stops in this Santa, or at least go out and wave to him and be passed by your neighbor.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you. Any other civic announcements from the city council?
We also have the event, um, is Crap with Santa at the Hazel Park Library. Also on Saturday and. Well, I believe that the hours are Crap with Santa at the Hazel Park Library. It's a registration event. You do need to register to that, but there are free pictures, all the children can book. And I want to say it's from ten until two, and I might be incorrect on those hours. Um, but we have so many great Santa events this Saturday. Um, you can really kind of mix and mingle and, and really get a great day of events here, you know, like.
Any other comments from the city council for civic announcements?
I will close civic announcements council. I'd like to open up public discussion, name of our public, any comments related to the city business? No one? Those public comments. Motion to approve, consider the agenda one through ten. Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda, I have one through ten.
Support. Any discussion on any particular item? I'd like to see if there's anyone here from A and I Enterprises Online School, fifteen fifty twenty eight mile. You know, they got a business license. A sanction? Some of the approved. The administration reports. Item one, emergency ordinance to add chapter nine point eight eight, disrupting schools. This is a new and. Item that we have, and I'm sure the administration or the attorney will fill us then on the new addition.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the administration requests an approval of this item on an emergency basis to just ensure school safety. I will, uh, refer to Melissa Schwartz, who will actually offer this.
Um, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a very important ordinance because it covers circumstances that, um, briefly had not been addressed. In particular, it's the disruptions that interrupted the peace and quiet early, um, functions of the school. Um, there are many, uh, ordinances in place that give rise to criminal activity of misdemeanors. But, uh, this now addresses that area where things are very disruptive and, uh, do not lend themselves to a healthy learning environment. This allows for civil infractions when we disrupt schools by interfering with the quiet and the peace and the good order of the school. This has been requested by, um, task force and many over the years, and I'm happy that administration has done what we've said.
And this was discussed with their, uh, school superintendent?
Our school superintendent, our police department, our police liaison officer. We have, uh, a task force that we put together comprised of, uh, the school district and, uh, the city administration, the city attorneys, and Hazel Park Police Department, and being on a regular basis recently. And, uh, this is one of the things we really have definitely.
We were already looking at some of the legislation before. We didn't pass some other legislation prior months ago to, uh, enforce the.
Absolutely.
More teeth than the.
This is, this is the ongoing process that we've been undertaking, uh, since the fall.
I move approval of the ordinance, uh, nine point eight eight, disturbing school. Support. Um, if I could, I'd like to read the very first part. I tend to, this has been part of the ordinance that I'll do. The city council hereby finds and determines all members of our community must assume a responsible role in promoting behavior that enhances academic and social success. Courteous, respectful and responsible behavior fosters a positive climate for the learning. Look, really important, why you doing this?
Mm-hmm.
Very important. Considering the circumstances in which we've all seen and witnessed on TV in the last couple of weeks with Oxford and other school events off the United States in the past years. I believe this is, uh, we're trying to do the best we can to keep up with what's happening and the changes. But it is a responsibility of our community to make sure we all hold each other to a higher, higher level of respect, honor and integrity to put that into our kids and hopefully they take it to school with them and hold on to that and expect the future like we all head to a different school. We may not like it, but we, uh, we do our best to, uh, through our schooling and use our parents' best we can as children. And I hope we can get back to those days, uh, so.
Um, I have a question for the city attorney. Do we have, um, are other local school districts around us, do they already have ordinance like this in place? Or did we take note on ordinances that are similar to this from them or?
That's a very good question. Thank you. We actually, um, do have a, we're in a school that has the disturbing schools. And, um, it is, uh, something that will probably become honestly instead of the rare occasion. So we're happy to, um, send it to the downtown. Top.
Thank you. Any more?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, this resolution is not only important in timing in terms of the real, real context, but, uh, our students and our children are our most valuable resource. And providing a optimal learning environment is extremely important. And I'd like to thank, um, Melissa and the whole team that had input on this, and I'm happy to support it.
Any other discussion? Motion passes. Item two, ordinance to amend chapter nine point nine tobacco sale and use of persons under the age of eighteen on second reading. I move approval of, uh, amending chapter nine point nine zero tobacco sale to and use by persons under eight seventy. Support. Any discussion on that? Sention? If it passes. Item three, orders to amend chapter fifteen point four four, sign code, second reading. Comments for the administration?
Mr. Mayor, this is second reading on this ordinance. And Mr. Campbell, if you have any further questions, the administration recommends adoption of this ordinance.
Anything for the first one, right? Any other comments from council?
Um, I just want to thank the administration for really working hard on this. Um, the permanent banners, um, on this building has been kind of a pet peeve of mine.
Everyone else has.
Um, I cannot tell you how many times that you're around the city taking photographs and studying enforcement and acting, uh, to use our standards, um, some really, I mean, full, that we're getting, uh, in fact, and we're getting a draft better and better.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we approve chapter, amend, the amendment to chapter fifteen point four four, sign code.
Just one comment is, well, timely with one of the signs of damage by the wind. When I take the mountain. Any other discussion? Sention? Passes. Item four, orders to amend chapter nine point eight four, minors and parental responsibilities, second reading. Council?
Mr. Mayor, I move, uh, to amend the name of chapter nine point four and to amend section nine point eight four, three zero, to amend and house. Support.
Any discussion? Comments? Sention? Motion passes on second reading. Takes us to the show cause hearing, two four five two zero, North Chrysler Drive. Do ask, uh, administration, any comments they want to make there before we have the F and come up?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, several of you were on council the last time, this was before, uh. Now, it was before us, there were certain things that were requested, those things were not done. We have given applicants additional time to provide, uh, with, uh, documentation, uh, that the property has been sold and demolition scheduled. Unfortunately, they have failed to do so. Uh, Mr. Campbell and myself have met with multiple prospective developers. Unfortunately, nothing has come with or from those discussions. The school building remains, uh, remains. So, uh, we have requested that, uh, Mr. Barry David, uh, representative of the church, be here. He is here today. I believe he has legal counsel. And the administration at this point in time is prepared to recommend an order for demolition.
Yes, would you please leave your name and address to the, or his name, William Barrett. Nice. Yeah, okay. They put it a little closer. Yeah, there's a little sense of. There you go. How's that? I'm sure you're picking it up now. Okay. Um, approximately a week ago, I was asked by Pastor Barry David to, uh, represent the landmark community church hearing. Um, I've tried to gather some documents, what is it, sponsored to William. Um, it is Pastor Barry David's election that he sometime ago gave, uh, Mr. Kovar Jar copy of the purchase agreement. I understand that Mr. Kovar Jar does not have a call as then. With any of that, I'm in a position I could tender to, uh, Ms. Schwartz or Kovar Jar copy it and then we put sale agreement, uh, as a current amendment, also a post in case of July thirty one, um.
What year is that, Counselor? July thirty one of what year? July thirty one of what year, sir?
July thirty one, I think, well, it's that. Twenty-two for the record, right? Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. I also have a copy of a fairly recent pedal commitment, uh, which served church shows, uh, clients ability to perform certainly the purchase agreement. The, um, I've, I've deleted from the copies of the, uh, purchase agreement and the amendment, the economics of the, uh, of the transaction, now that I don't want you to know about it. But because, uh, if, uh, another purchaser becomes involved, you don't want the numbers to be out of public record because of the ceiling or the floor or, uh, a sale of the property. Um, in some way, if we can reveal the information confidentially, we're happy to do that. Um, I do have a, one broker opinion of value that was sent sometime ago. Um, I have not exactly finished document, uh, through my oversight, uh, the, uh, dollar amount that, uh, it was, that broker's opinion of property was off. Again, my reason for, uh, for not to reveal that dollar amount is the same. And I've heard the information accurate, it requires the city to reveal information of the ceiling, that a floor, the preventing transaction in the future. Um, see, there's anything else? But now. May I answer your question? Sure. If you already have a closing date of July thirty first, twenty twenty-two, why would there be any need for any other type of bidding or, uh, pursuing any other offers? You know, if I know what's going on, I know the guy's going to run. But if you already entered into a contract to close on June, July thirty first, twenty twenty-two, uh, why would you want to proceed if you already have real stuff? Because there's no certainty. Would we believe the transaction will close? We all. Exactly. I guess.
And that is exactly the current.
And that was part of the point. And if you could, my other point would be if you have a direct confirmation of such of a purchase agreement to be done and executed by July thirty first, twenty twenty-two, then I think this board would have compassion over how this is handled. But not that you, that you don't have direct confirmation is also there'll be depending on how this board makes certain decision. I just wanted to let you know. My experience in any real estate transaction, you don't know what's going to be, uh, closing, both closing.
Mr. Garrett, may I simply see a copy of the purchase agreement that you have there, too?
Right.
Thank you.
No. Do you have any?
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
Well, not this time. I want my attorney, or attorney to look at a couple of things here, since you wanted to hold this confidentiality on this property.
Melissa Steele, may I just, she's very a lot in power.
I think the original person was signed, uh, a year ago and just. What would, uh, on that real estate person, what would be the reason for laying the sale for more than one? Money is a function of the, uh, developer, uh, parents, the finance giver, donor, whatever. But if there were going to be any time even consideration given, we would need all of the, it would.
Mr. Mayor.
Money available.
And Mr. Mayor, developer coming.
You, Mr. Mayor, remember, one person. If, uh, if I may, I don't think that, bearing on your decision, what, hello? We have, uh, heard from, uh, the ownership of this property multiple times. And we have been dangled with carrot of the sale and development before, multiple times, as I've said. Mr. Campbell and I have met with, uh, you know, multiple different developers. There are, uh, purchase agreements, our options will be agreements that go hard and close and nothing really ever happened. But I think the real thing here that you need to consider the tough with is, is the building and, uh, the negative impact it's had on the community. So I think whether or not there is a, a, a purchase order or whatever, they're free to sell the property anytime. We're, we're.
I understand.
Your obligation as members of Hazel Park City Council to consider the output of the community. And basically, if that revolves around the building, uh, you're aware, you have the active, uh, information, uh, about the condition of this building. No permits, hold, make any improvements to this building. So, uh, again, I think that's what you should, uh, make a decision based on that.
And the people who, uh, among who, even if we do order it tomorrow, they still have other, you know.
Again.
I mean, they could go, go to certi court. That's their option.
I presume to give them real advice about.
Not giving them without.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, if we don't have this, uh, it would take at least six months to have it.
And I'm not going to say, I'm just saying it would take probably a hundred eighty days.
I wouldn't plead, I wouldn't.
Disurge any of you who speculate about that.
I'm just saying, uh, that is, uh, process.
I'm just going to ask.
Yes, that's.
Is there a, is there a limit once a demolition order is, is approved? Is there a time limit that?
Uh, the order down, uh, in a certain number of days. So, you know, I think we have to be reasonable at this point. Uh, you know, we have weather and things like that. And I think a reasonable order for demolition is sometime in May, say, May fifteenth. And, uh, it requires that, uh, you know, a twenty thousand dollar bond be posted, uh, in the state so that we can ensure that demolition will actually in fact take place.
Counselor, can you share the intentions of the developer?
I'm sorry?
You share the intentions of the developer, have the facility demolished and new build?
I don't know what the intentions of the seller are. I assume the intention was to destroy all the building. But I don't know that in fact, I'm not spoken. I think we need to get back on target here. Uh, the target is whether or not we want to pursue, uh, the action of demolition of this full part of the landmark property.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any more questions for council?
Any other comments you'd like to make? If you would have comments. Sounds to me like, uh, the W may be the reason. And, uh, my client will have to, uh, apparently, unfortunately, uh, this was difficult for, uh, really, um, it's unfortunate because I don't think we, uh, it wasn't too bad, but, you know, for the student. Any other comments from the advocate? Are you done? Close the comments from the. A lot of good. You're for the hearing office, I mean, I'm sorry. Building Department. Mr. Finch?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Uh, last we were in the building was, uh, March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. And at that time, we worked, did, we, full block two building from, uh, up bottom.
Can we go back a little bit, please? So originally it was tagged on January four twenty-first, twenty sixteen.
I believe it was the day.
The region we have here for the record, I want that on the record, please. And then the last inspection was three twenty of the P S, which we have back to the mayor, is continuing.
That's right. At the time of the inspection took place, uh, uh, the danger is unstable sanitary structure. We have multiple items that are in there, who presented, that are a danger to anybody in the building. And, uh, I don't know what the building would be like at this point, and another four going on, four years have passed. We've been in there, and I'm sure we probably could add to the list. And the inspection took place in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, I don't know if there's any power on in the building. That would be a complete, a concern because the electrical inspection, inspection indicated a lot of raw wiring and exposed things, buzz car. It's high voltage, exposed, uh, which is not a good thing. So hopefully the power is off in the building. I couldn't answer that, we've not been there again before going on four years. It would be the recommendation to, uh, have this structure taken down as soon as possible.
May, may I ask, sir, um, during the time that we started with the initial hanging of twenty sixteen, have the property owner pulled any permit to do any?
Not to my knowledge, we don't have any building to make. What's the issue?
So legally, in our knowledge, there has been no effort to repair, remediate or secure this building in any way since the original hanging in twenty sixteen.
That would be my belief that this time without visiting the property and see if there's been anything going on there without permits.
May I ask why we have not, um, since, why we have not entered the building? Is it a safety concern or has it, has it been, um?
I believe the, the process has been, uh, basically going along with, uh, honesty or, or, uh, nature that, uh, something is going to happen with the building, it is going to come down, there's going to be a development. And that's been going on for years.
Okay.
That would be an active statement.
Just wanted to be sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Finch. Thank you. Okay. Takes us to the city council. How would you feel about this property and what direction would you like to go in?
Um, I'd be interested in making a motion, if anything, if you want to entertain that. Um, I'd like to make a motion for the demolition of the property at two four five two zero, North Chrysler Drive. Um, I would like that demolition to include a twenty thousand dollar bond for the city of Hazel Park. On, um, completion of that demolition by May fifteenth of twenty twenty-two.
Support with a comment? This is from the city council public hearing minutes, January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, almost three years ago. And it was a motion to give the owner of the property six months to sell it, it assigned purchase agreement, closing date, and any other thing, but this, um, and the situation we've got has been three years. That was important. Any other comments from city council or add-ons to the motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we would, uh, expect that the, uh, ownership would pull permits for demolition by, uh, January sixth.
January sixth? And the bond be posted by the same time?
Yes.
Motion maker feel that this, want to be put that in the motion?
Do you like to even say the entire motion?
Says if you want that, put it in.
Yeah. Yes.
Does it support the line? Yes. Any other discussion? Add-ons? Sention? Motion passes. Okay, it takes us to the Orders and Commissions Recreation Advisory Board reappointment. If you want to go back to this, after we have the interviews.
Uh, they need to see the serve you if, uh, uh, council member Sullivan has, uh, expressed, uh, uh, interviews. That's what, uh, you all decided you wanted before. So they need teaching to serve and you will.
Yeah.
I think that's a great, I think that's a great start to a new policy, and thank you for that.
Thank you. It opens up a new business, a new business. Comments from the city council for new business? See none in closing business, communication from department heads, we have a lot here. Anyone who wants to go first, anyone? See no one, then you can close it down.
Here comes Lady Kristen.
Right? That's an equal.
I know. I have a huge list, too. Yay, some gear up. All right, so I have a big list for you guys. Uh, the first one is a major statement audit. Got my draft today. Uh, we're still working on it, it needed well, and it's a little bit rundown, so then, uh, this year primarily due to, um, the several grants that we received, but this is, you know, several years in a row that we haven't worked with them yet. So hopefully we're a little better integrated in the future if we have a down payment again. Uh, we also had a single audit this year because we had seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or more in federal grant revenues. We have a full audit, so we'll be at town right now, but everything looks good there as well. Um, December tax, being that they split out in the mail, but they should have those, they're payable at city hall until February, uh, fourteenth. And then you can still pay in the city hall, but you do get penalties and interest from, until the end of March. And then at the end of March, they go to the town, you can't pay them anymore. They're payable by, um, cash, check, credit card, put it in the drop box, mail it to us, come in and see the ladies. Sue and we show they're friendly, they'll chat with the residents, so come on in and pay them. I'm happy to help out. Uh, the, here are the, uh, our calling. Uh, the, here are the, uh, our company partners, I know there's going to be two, Sue, I'm sorry, Sam, and Lynn and Jared working on the D S N A. They were on H R transition that you approved a couple of months ago. So, um, they took that and they ran with it, and a little to do with me, thankfully, they, uh, those two, they did a good job. So now we're all integrated, the other department has been there and helped call, is getting on board with the new time sheets. But that'll, um, that'll speed things along, you know, digital, having a paper, so we're happy with that, with that process. Uh, A R P A, we're going to be coming to you guys in January in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, we're wanting to try to do basically a, uh, a study session on this. So there's an understanding in community and certainly with, uh, you guys on, uh, council and with the department head and all of our taxpayers and stakeholders, so everybody understands the actual, the actual reality of municipal finance. So we used to do it all the time, uh, we haven't done it in a few years, so it's time to do it again. Because of course, mission system, municipal finance is fundamentally broken, but we have to explain why that is and why I say that every year. Sorry, go ahead.
So we'll do, uh, you know, the revenue loss calculation, revenue loss, we'll do all that. Um, and talking has been, uh, uh, let's see.
May, no, so quick, the, um, somebody had that posted online asking if the sidewalk replacement, they, will be paid online as well?
Those are not online right now. Uh, we're looking at, we're looking into.
Okay.
Uh, so currently. Because the invoice.
So currently in person or at the drop box?
Drop box, they all have the.
Yeah, that's good, we're investigating, maybe finding a more, you know, for our credit card, so it's still not.
So the credit card fee does not, that's what, that's what the credit card company charges. Um, right now, we're looking, we are looking into some other options, like, uh, we'll just buy your bank, they don't have time to, you know, it's, um, I'll remember, you know, a lot of times those are free, so I am looking at that. Uh, but that's usually the going rate, sometimes you can find it in two and a half percent. D S N A supports it, it's a couple, like, in, um, I thought. So that, that three percent is normal, and we do, we have some, people bring that up, we don't collect any of that. It goes right to.
Right, we, unlike a private business, we can't use, uh, taxpayers' funds.
I just wanted to make sure we got a company that we use for their rates.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, because I have a chat on.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same, it's the same rate. Um, and then the C A, the building code department, the building department, even though it's winter, so very busy, so obviously a lot, uh, prenaps and construction coming out, so they're staying busy. Um, and the code department, I want to give a special talk about them, they are the kind of the unsung hero of the city, you know, like, the code will walk to your house. But just know, and allow the residents to know that they are here to, um, they're not here to pick it, they're not here to make somebody's life harder here to try to compliance, try to make the city safe, maybe clean, kids, animals walking around. So, um, there's nothing I'll work with you, they have lists of resources that they're willing to, you know, give you, to the residents. Um, no guarantees, but try to track, call, if you have a problem, you gotta notice, call the building department. The code officers are great, it's the best group of code officers that you could, that we have here. Um, and they're willing to work with anybody, so just, uh, just give them a call and see what they can do. We're just, we're just looking to get city safe, keep, I believe, they'll just maintain. They're not the, the anti, um, resident.
With their code officers, I know they have several keys. Uh, email addresses are available with the tickets when they receive them.
Um, the name of the code officer is, um, ticket, and then, um, online and, and all their info.
Well, they're, well, anybody who goes their email, they'll think it's, you know, sure, yes, it is.
Information online.
And that way their comments can be heard.
Yeah, and they, and they are, they, there's also, um, a general, uh, box that, uh, several of us get, so if you depend general, um, resident complaint box, we'll get that in the box.
I just want it out there for the public.
Yeah, it's out there, they're, they're a great group, they really are, they're hard workers.
I'm sure. Let's say that, it's one of the, all the general resident knows that.
I feel that code enforcement is such a thankless job, and I appreciate the work that they do in bringing our community, um, safer and cleaner and on the track that we're headed, which is to be more inclusive and accessible and safe. And I think that that's really an important factor, and we will be doing that in three days. And they write me a ticket from my, sorry, we can't.
They do while they want to, to see the rest, not with the, they're.
No, I just wanted to follow up on what you said about the resident complaint thing on our city's website. Uh, when you go and click on that and you enter a communication with us or a complaint or a concern about an issue, it does go to multiple members of the administration, so we all see it. So someone else will follow up on that.
If you don't get a response, I will again.
You, you, we will get a response.
You usually get a response. You may not like the response, but you get a response.
Reminder for everybody, City Hall closed, um, between four and five seven, and then again, on the very first and the third. Uh, and I will call that noon on the twenty third. And then finally, I had this on my note, on my door to remember, the giving tree in the middle of the City Hall here. So please, um, come on in and grab a ticket, it says the names that you reach, uh, and your wishes. Then it's back to City Hall, we'll make sure, with other departments, please, the fire, together, and we'll make sure that donations get to be.
Unwrapped, make sure they're unwrapped, President.
And please, we'll put the, the ticket, the, the, the pad that you grab. And we'll make sure that anybody's wishes come through.
Thanks, sir.
Everybody's free.
Thank you.
Your son.
I would like to click that, that would be great, thank you.
Any other department heads want to follow that? I didn't think so, it was very informative, thank you.
No, I just want to let you know, Mr. Mayor, that they're all out there and they're all working on things, and they're all very busy. Uh, Tim Young is working on, you know, lead line replacement, monitoring legislation. Uh, Chief Foucault is busy working, uh, not just running the police department, but he is also working with, uh, the attorneys and I and liaising with the schools so we can make sure that everyone is safe, uh, over there. We've got Tom Jones, who always, uh, does amazing things. Next to him is Jen, who has decorated City Hall with the help of D P W folks and some of our employees, and she works very hard. And, uh, Sabrina Pacquiao is also in the audience as well, and we've had multiple, uh, events, uh, that she's been working on, and she's been giving me information on, uh, things that we're working on for different projects and stuff like that. So, uh, everybody here works hard and does an amazing job. So, thank you.
The attorney, any comments, please?
Just want to wish everyone a happy holiday. And, uh, and thank you, administration, the council for all that you do to make the city.
And thank you, Melissa, you've been very busy as well.
Very, very.
Well, since I've already talked about the broken state of this, this municipal finance system, uh, in a more serious note, you know, we're all shocked and saddened by the events that happened, uh, in Oxford since our last council meeting. And, you know, I just want to say, and I think that you can see here that this mayor and this council, uh, are committed to doing everything that we can do as a community, uh, to make our, uh, schools a safe environment as possible. We have a good working relationship with the school administration now, and, uh, like I said, we're, we're working very hard. Uh, we plan to, for, uh, any and micro members of youth assistance, we plan to involve that group more in our plans as well. And it really is, safety is the community's responsibility. Uh, I know that some of you mentioned that before, and it's a very true statement. Uh, it's all of our responsibility to create a safe environment for the children and young people in our community. Now, that means if you're a gun owner, be responsible in how you store your firearm, okay? It's very, very important to effect you, uh, to be responsible in that matter, with every right comes a responsibility. So please remember that this holiday season. I want to thank, uh, thank my department head, and, uh, again, I want to thank my mayor and council for, uh, being so supportive of this administration and working so hard for, uh, you know, a tiny fitness that you received. Uh, to be council people, you really put the time in. It's a pleasure to work for you and with you, and I want to thank each and everybody, each and every one of you for your dedication to this community. There's a lot more that goes into being, uh, a member of the city council than just showing up at the city council meeting. So we've all been together at different meetings on and off for the past, uh, a few weeks, and there's no, you know, there's no sign that that schedule's going to lighten up anytime soon. But thank you all for your commitment. Finally, I want to wish you all, everybody here and everybody watching on T V at home in all of Hazel Park, a very Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, whatever, uh, holidays you, uh, support and embrace this year. I wish, uh, you and your family health, happiness, my very.
Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
All right. This is the last week of, uh, yard refus pickup. Uh, if you don't get it out, you gotta do it in person, and bags are heavy, so make sure to take care of that this week. Um, to piggyback off of, uh, as common by Oxford, I just want to make sure that people are aware that you can get a free gun lock from a department. Uh, if you do not have a gun lock, a handgun or firearm, please do so. Um, a year ago at this time, I was, uh, minding my own business, and a year later, I am on council, uh, with a four-year term looking, that I'm looking forward to. Uh, it's really crazy how life changes quickly in this holiday season. I just want to say how thankful I am for all the department heads that are here, uh, the residents of Hazel Park, the administration, and most especially, uh, this awesome group of elected officials have the pleasure of sitting with and serving us through that. Thank you.
And I will, I must state for the record that council member, uh, Luflando may have the coolest sport coat in the history of Hazel Park.
Oh, see, I'll make sure I wear it. The discussed is.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to also thank all of the department heads, you guys do a great job. Uh, and I know you don't hear it very often, uh, but thank you. I think a lot of things, the government are very thankful, because we usually only hear about the complaints, but, um, thank you. You know, uh, and I also want to wish everyone a very happy holiday, um, and continue to support our city's businesses as much as you possibly can. Uh, some of them are still struggling, so if you can eat out or order food, uh, that would be great, uh, in supporting the different restaurants in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Solomon?
Thank you so much. Um, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is, um, our last city council meeting of the twenty twenty-one year, and, um, as somebody who has repeatedly experienced just crummy luck over the last three years, I'm happy to see another year go. Um, on that note, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday, have a safe New Year. If you are out drinking on your feet, there are multiple ride share options for free safe ride home. Um, I will post those on my Facebook page, and I will send them to the city, but I'm, as well. Um, I also want to, um, thank our city staff, our court staff, our first responders here in Hazel Park, um, both our fire department and our police department. Um, we will all be working on this holiday as we were in previous years, and I want to thank the members of our staff who come to work on those holidays because emergencies don't care what day of the year it is. Um, I want to also just point out that, um, of all the things that we keep talking about up here on the city council, um, teamwork, and really, um, that kind of, you know, work that we do with each other, within, within our individual departments here in Hazel Park, that's really what makes our city a bit unique in the way that it functions, is our ability to work as a team, even if we disagree on things, even if we come from different viewpoints, we always work together as a team to create the best, safest environment for our community and its residents and our neighbors because we all live here. Um, an update on the Santa information that I gave out earlier, I did have chance to, I finally found it. Um, the library Santa craft is from one till three P M on Saturday the eighteenth. You can call to register, two four eight five four six four zero nine five. And then the Santa tour starts at the community center at ten fifty, that Hoover Elementary at eleven oh five, at Hoover High School, or sorry, Hazel Park High School at eleven eleven, Hazel Park School Administration Building at eleven twenty-two, West Elementary at eleven thirty-seven, and then at eleven forty-six, there'll be the historical museum. And then from the museum, it will be there from twelve to three, that's also a toy drive, so you can attend to all of these events, um, throughout the day and really have a great day with your family. Um, finally, on a more sober note, um, my cousin attended Oxford School and was there the day of the shooting, and, um, it has just rocked our family. Um, getting that phone call from my mother was breathtaking, like, it took the breath out of me. Um, my cousin is safe, his friends are safe, um, there are a bunch of families that can't say that. And, um, I'm a gun owner, and I cannot, I cannot be strong enough to people to keep your guns safe. Um, as council member Londo mentioned, on our, uh, Hazel Park Police Department does offer free gun locks. That's a great first step in keeping your guns safe. Um, safe are the best option, there are also education, there are so many ways to be a responsible gun owner. And, um, I just think more people really need to take, to take that time, if you're going to, you know, if you're going to exercise that right with all rights and great responsibilities, and, um, we really need to keep our, keep our children safe and keep our community safe. Um, I'm really grateful for our Hazel Park Police Department and their work with our schools and with our city administration, um, figuring out ways to better, um, keep our schools even safe, and I hate that we have to even talk about that. Um, the previous parapro, I had to practice on safety drills, and it is mortifying. Um, standing in a room with scissors while you hide your students behind a wooden door is just horrific. Um, we've got to do better in the country, and, um, we have to do better for our students, the future of our country, so. On that note, again, hug everybody that you love, I know Andy's going to take that one off. Um, but just, uh, enjoy these holidays with your loved ones, and, uh, really make them special and stay safe and, and keep your loved ones safe.
Um, that's great, I forgot, Andy, I forgot. Like, I'll do, I'll switch around. The, what I often say, like, um, this person who was doing the shooting at the, at Oxford, I can just imagine that he didn't give a lot of kinds of hugs and people telling him, telling him his love. So I want to wish everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, whatever you do to celebrate. If you love somebody, tell them, if you have children, hug them and tell them you love them, everything. I just can imagine this, I don't, didn't give that. Thank you for coming out.
As a parent, it's, it's horrific what happened at this school. As a human being, it's horrific. Have any person think that way, or is there fellow colleagues of students or the health team? It's hard to understand for all of us, we can't fathom why it's happening. But, you know, all of us are human, and we all have problems of our own. That's what we can do is try to support one another in one way or another, and we can't. Help shore off that person some way, give them a nice, uh, attaboy that you're all, you know, even your own kids, you have to, you know, keep an eye out for them all the time. We, you know, I just, up and said, it takes a village to raise a kid. Everybody looks out for their mom. When I was growing up, the neighborhood kid, uh, you know, hey, my parents down the street, if I did something wrong, they were on the phone to my parents before I got home. So we keep an eye out for one another, and our children, we keep everybody safe. Hopefully that's happens in the future, hopefully continues as much as we can. I do want to say we have, you know, young son heroes here sitting in the audience, a lot of our department heads. And, uh, a lot of departments don't get the recognition, and other ones get more recognition. Everybody loves the fire department, right? So, and the police department has gotten a lot of bad press in the last couple of years.
Not our police department.
Our, me, our, the police department has been doing more and more P R and service announcements and getting out in the public, and you're seeing that we are community police here. And it's made a big difference with the youngsters as well as a lot of adults. Even if someone's doing something wrong, I've heard it from other officers, they'll roll up to this person's house that they've been to before. They respect the officer because their officers talked to them before, in a respectful and meaningful manner. And I think that's what a lot of other cities and places around the United States don't offer. We are unique in that because we are a smaller community.
We are unique in that, because we are a smaller community, and we have that ability to stand and talk to our neighbors and our police and fire departments. Everybody loves our fire department, because they're also out there to help you on your worst day as well. I also want to say our code enforcement, they're out there to help keep the community clean, so we can all have a better way of life. And our E P W is there to help keep our parks, our streets clean, making a difference, picking up the trash, stuff, some jobs you wouldn't even want to think about. Then we have, of course, at the clerical, the clerical goes the day-to-day mundane boring stuff, as my daughter says, she was a predator's aid. And, uh, it's, so nobody, you know, they do very, a lot of different variety of things of work. And some civic clerk, and their administrators, or, we have so many different departments, there's so many different talents. And the water department is another one, you know, clean drink water. We have Tim here, always got something to say about the water department. Uh, he's always up, uh, queue with everything, and so, I'll have to do with some various things with water. Uh, but I just want to say thank you to all of you, thank you. And, uh, I just want to keep in mind, that I have, it's been a great pleasure this year, again, to serve with such great people and my colleagues, to boot this city board, and be motivating, rethinking, and looking out for the awareness of others. And that's what our city drives to do. Hopefully, we'll continue striving, and have to work on, look out for others. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
See you next year.